That's easy to say those things. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you. Again, good evening. Welcome to the June 20th regular Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. If I could have attendance from my left.
Richard Lutz.
Mike Dolan.
John Grant.
Anthony Sutton.
Carl S. Moore.
Rick Verone.
Tom Nichol.
Tom Panzella.
And I'm Board Chair Scott Marlowe. We're joined by David Sulcus, and I guess we'll get started. So first item under New Business, roll call Staff Report, we don't usually do Staff Report then, but we'll do New Business, is Item 1, 104 Beach Avenue, Zone R-7.5, Petition of John Ruffalo III for Coastal Area Management Site Plan Review to construct a single-family residence on MAP 60, Block 743, Parcel 2, of which Mario and Grace Perone are the owners. Is anyone here to present that? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Board and Commissioner. My name is John Ruffalo, John Ruffalo Architects. My office is in Shelton, Connecticut, and I have Mr. and Mrs. Perone here for any questions to be asked at this time.
Would you like to just review the plan with us?
Do you have the plan, or do you want me to?
Have anything to present, or, I mean, up in front there?
Yeah. The only thing I do have to present that was a change is that we received, the West Cotton Mates received a letter from the City Engineer about some comments, and we've had the corrected CAM report here, three copies, and also a corrected site plan and storm drainage plan from West Cotton Mates and myself on my drawings. I don't, I do have a site plan here if you wish me to go through that with you.
I think it would be good just to review. Yes, thank you. Does this come off?
What we have here at 104 Beach Avenue is a lot that's about 6,663 square feet. It's a legal, non-conforming lot. And what we've done here in the yellow area, we have designed a three-story house, a residence, with a detached garage as an accessory building. We've also extended the driveway to the back to the garage as fault areas. And in the front areas where there are the grass areas, West Cotton Mates has designed a storm retainer system for that, and the sanitary lines come out into the existing street, and water and gas are taken from the street also. The house is approximately total square footage, about 3,400 to 3,500 square feet, and with porch areas about another 350 square feet on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Sulcus, do you have any comments?
Steve Harris reviewed this, and he said that it satisfies the criteria of Section 5.12 of the zoning regulations.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Board? Mr. Graham.
I just have a comment. I just want to say that you are actually the first person that actually read our regulations for figuring out what the average grade was. Actually, I liked your chart.
Oh, thank you.
You were the first one that I've seen that do it. Just wanted to tell you that.
Well, we've learned from experience, so I can't take all the credit.
Are there other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, thank you.
No, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion from the Board. Yes. I move to approve as presented.
I'll second. Second.
Is there any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, 20, Bridgewater Avenue, Zone R-5, Petition of Lee Dwyer for Coastal Management Site Plan Review to construct a single-family residence on MAP 13, Block 139, Parcel 1, of which Riza Mansouri is the owner. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Riza Mansouri, architect, and the applicant, Lee Dwyer, here. We, this project was approved.
Excuse me, one sec. Could you just give your name and address again, please?
Sure. Riza Mansouri, architect from Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Do you want the exact address or just the town? This project was originally approved, and we did not realize that the permit expires a period of 12 months, so basically nothing has changed. Everything is the same. We're just basically coming back to reapply to get the approval back, because basically nothing has changed, the same plan, same site plan.
Mr. Sulcus, do you have comments?
That's exactly as he said about a year ago. This was approved by the Board, or more than, a little more than a year ago, and because they didn't pull their permit, the application expired, which is why they're here this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Yes.
I have a question. The sandbags you have all over the place down there, what was the purpose of that? Just to hold back the water?
Those sandbags, we had asked Steve at the time if we could fill the sandbags, and he had said yes, so we filled them. We put them in the locations where we thought we would be needing them prior to digging, and the orange bags that are closer to the street have to go out near the green bags out front near the tie. But that's it. We got permission from Steve prior to filling them.
For record, could you just give your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Lee Dwyer, 26 Alteria Road, North Branford, Connecticut.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, thank you. I'd entertain a motion. Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there, are there any questions or comments from the Board on motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we're into the public hearings. There were some that was left open. Item 3 and 4 was tabled to July 5th, so at the request of the applicant. So we'll move on to Item F, Public Hearing left open. Item 5 is 178 Seaside Avenue, Zone R-12.5, Petition of Thomas Lynch Esquire for special permit Coastal Management and Site Plan Review Approval to construct 12 residential units under Connecticut General Statutes 8-30G on MAP 35, Block 434, Parcel 8, of which GAMSLC is the owner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And once again, for the record, Thomas Lynch, I'm representing the applicant on this matter, and this is a continuation of the public hearing from our last meeting. If you recall, we had concluded our presentation. There was public comment upon the conclusion of our presentation. We responded to the public comment, and then the Board saw fit to leave this hearing open. One of the items that I know we're going to get into shortly is that upon the request of the Board, Mr. Sulcus asked for a third-party review of our traffic study, and I know that you are in receipt of Mr. Hua's report, and I'm sure he's going to go into that in greater detail. He is here tonight. But I just wanted to touch base on a couple of points that came up during the course of our presentation to you. If you recall, I made reference in our handout to the fact that the initial Police Commission review of this raised concerns about the garbage trucks coming onto the site. I assume that you've now received the approval from the Police Commission that was issued on June 12th upon a report that was prepared by Patrolman Brandon Davidson, who's the head of the Traffic Division. His report is dated June 6, 2017, and I'm not going to read the entire memo into the record, Mr. Chairman. You all have a copy of that, and it speaks for itself. But the concern that Patrolman Davidson had on his initial review of the plans was, in fact, a dump truck or a large-sized garbage truck coming onto the site, removing the refuse, and then backing out onto Seaside Avenue, creating what he perceived to be a traffic safety issue. Upon discussion with my client, again, as you know, we made, as part of our presentation in the handout that I gave to you at the last meeting, the report from the karting company, their letter stating that they would be removing the garbage on-site with a smaller truck that would, in fact, be able to do what's called a K-turn within the confines of the parking lot and service the removal of both the garbage and the recycled materials from the units. So upon submission of those documents to Patrolman Davidson, he did review those with my client. He issued his memorandum to you. So in supplement to our comments to you at the last public hearing, in fact, the Police Commission has issued an approval for this site development. There were two items that David had raised in his staff review that I'm going to turn things over now to Ron Wasmer. There was a concern about a fence being installed in the rear portion of the property. The plans have been amended to reflect that. And also, David had raised an issue about lighting emanating from the site onto Seaside Avenue. Again, we did consult with our lighting schematic consultant, and Ron will go into the revisions that he's made to his site plan to address that. Other than that, we stand by the presentation that we made to you. I'd ask the public comment be addressed to these items that we're raising here tonight. And my last point is that Seaside Avenue is, in fact, a state highway. My client brought the plans. They were reviewed by Paul Holmes of the State Department of Transportation. Paul is the Chief State Inspector for this area. His office is located in New Haven, and these plans have been approved by the State DOT. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Ron Wasmer.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Ronald Wasmer, professional engineer, land surveyor with an office at 158 Research Drive, Milford, Connecticut. Very briefly, want to touch base on a couple items that we've revised on the plan. There was a question raised about screening fencing. We had indicated screening fencing on the north and the south side, and inadvertently had not indicated the fence along the westerly side of the property. So we've revised the drawings. I delivered three copies yesterday to the Planning and Zoning Office. I have copies for the members should they desire to look at them. And also, a question was brought up at the last hearing about lighting, and there was some lighting that was spilling into the street over the property line. Your regulations recommend that you don't have any lighting leaving the property in this zone. We asked the lighting consultants to review. The plan, they've reduced the height of this light, first, the first light entering the property, and so at this point, the lighting isometric plan indicates there's no light trespassing over the property line. With that, added the information I'd like to this evening.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation to the Board, and I know that Mr. Hua is here and wants to address you with respect to his review of our traffic study, so I leave it to you to ask him to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hua.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Kremet Hua, KWH Enterprise LLC, Meriden, Connecticut. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I was asked by City Planner, Mr. Sulcus, to review the traffic study prepared by DLS Traffic Engineering LLC dated April 25, 2017. I went to the site last Friday and also reviewed the, this traffic study, and I have submitted to the Commission a brief review of the traffic study. So overall, my finding is I, I'm sorry, I agree with DLS's traffic engineering in its methodology and conclusions of the study. I will be really brief to summarizing, to summarize the main conclusions of the study is, one is the level of service. DLS looked at at intersection of a Seaside Avenue and the Meadowside Road, and also at the intersection of the side driveway and Seaside Road. The findings are, we are looking at level of service A, B, or C at all these two intersections during weekday peak hours, AM and PM. The post-build level of service for these two intersections will remain A, B, and C. To me, that's, those are acceptable level of services for this area, and as far as the net traffic impact or the net number of trips generated by this development, we are looking at nine trips for the morning peak hour and 11 trips for the afternoon peak hour, just so you give you a, an order of magnitude of these trips in relation to the existing volumes on Seaside Avenue. We are looking at about 2% to 3% of the existing volumes, peak hour volumes on Seaside Avenue. So in my opinion, that's not a significant impact to the, to the adjacent street. The traffic study also looked at the side distances, you know, looking left and looking right from the side driveway, and the criteria Mr. Spear used is 390 feet, you know, the DOT criteria. From my observation last Friday, the side distances well exceed this DOT criteria, so there's no issue. And the last point is, Mr. Spear's report looked at the recent year traffic accidents on Seaside Avenue. I also separately looked at the accidents for Seaside Avenue, for the segment of Seaside Avenue between Meadowside Road and the Lewis Street for five years, using a different data source, and I reached the same conclusion. During a five-year period from 2012 to 2015, there were two accidents at the intersection of Meadowside Road and Seaside Avenue, and I don't see any significant traffic safety concerns based on this, based on this data, accident data. So that's, briefly, that's all I have. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sulcus, comments? Any comments on what was presented so far?
I have no comments on anything new that's been presented.
Are there questions from the Board for anything that was presented?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lutz.
Hi. Just as a question, there was some concern from the Police Department about a garbage truck, and then the applicants came through with the idea of, you know, a smaller garbage truck, which worked very well, okay? If someone was moving into this complex and there was a moving van, where would that moving van be? How would it, how would it take the furniture off, and where would it park?
Mr. Lutz, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to look at a site plan. The only document I got from the planner is the traffic study, so probably on site, I have no idea, because I haven't seen the plan itself.
If someone was going to have furniture delivered, or someone was going to have water delivered, I was, you folks were kind enough to make some changes. I wonder if signage saying, like, for instance, a vehicle, no vehicles over a certain size could be allowed in?
Well, I, again, I haven't seen the site plan itself, but I guess if you put a sign...
Excuse me, one sec. Mr. Lutz, would this, this would probably be better for the applicant's engineer to
I'm happy to answer that. I live on Maple Street, right around the corner from here, and just today, a very large Raymour &amp; Flanagan truck delivered furniture to my neighbor. He parked in the street. It's a single-family residential neighborhood.
Is parking allowed on your street?
I would assume under the same scenario that a car, a truck would park on Seaside Avenue and deliver furniture to the site.
If, excuse me, excuse me, one minute, please. If everyone in the audience could please just let the applicant talk and let us ask the questions, everyone will have a chance to, to comment. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, if I'm correct, there is no parking allowed on Seaside Avenue. There is par...
I don't think, I don't think that's correct.
There, I went and checked. I went and looked, okay?
Well, regardless.
Yeah, there is parking allowed on Ma... Excuse me, excuse me.
Regardless, to answer your question, in a single instance such as what you've cited, the driveway can completely take in a truck making a delivery. I feel, again, based on the size of the driveway servicing the site, for a single instance such as you've cited, like delivering furniture or something like that, or somebody moving in, clearly the parking lot could have come in.
Well, you know, your first answer, I thought, was better. In other words, rather than having them pull in and then having to back out again, what if we had signs that said, you know, let them be on the street on Seaside Avenue with their blinkers on rather than coming in, because if they have to try to back out again, we're going to have a problem.
If you, if you feel that that's something that needs to be addressed, my client would be certainly willing to have that as a condition of unapproval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to let you know, we have no jurisdiction over signage on the state highway. The Board has no jurisdiction on signage over the state highway, and we went through this exercise with the last application that was on Seaside Avenue.
No, I wasn't suggesting on Seaside Avenue, the signage would be on their property. In other words, saying no trucks over a certain size allowed on the property.
Well, I... Thank you. Are there other questions from the, from the Board? Yes.
Yeah, I have quite a few questions. May take the engineers some time to answer these, but I'm willing to sit here. I would like to know when the perk test was done on this piece of property?
I believe it was in March, and I just want to state that the City Engineer has reviewed the drainage, and he's approved these plans.
And at what level was the water table?
Didn't encounter any water.
You did not encounter any water?
That's correct.
Okay. Based on the fact that you're putting a couple galleys in there, and they fill up, I mean, you're draining now three-quarters of an acre into two galleys, where does the excess water go?
There's two large galleys, two banks of large, two large banks of galleys. The galleys were designed to handle the rainfall, which we reviewed at the last meeting. I've also submitted the report to the City Engineer per the city's requirements demonstrating that the storm drainage system on this property, this development, can handle the rainfall as required by the engineering...
If the galleys fill up, where does the water go?
Would you ask that question one more time?
If the galleys fill with water, where does the water go?
The galley, the water percolates into the ground. That's why these galley systems are quite large.
If the water table is up and it cannot soak into the ground, where does the water go?
As an engineer, I went onto the site and I did an investigation. I dug holes into the ground, eight, nine feet deep. We didn't encounter any groundwater. This was done in March.
Eight or nine feet? You did not encounter water? That's amazing. Another question for you, sir. Was there a soil scientist involved in this at all to determine how much water this soil could take?
Soil scientists are typically hired. When there are wetlands on a site, they don't design storm drainage systems. A professional engineer does, and that is myself, and I did.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm having a little hard time hearing you. Can you get a little closer to the mic? Maybe bring it a little closer to your mouth?
Okay. I'll try a little bit harder. I do tend to talk a little bit quiet.
I have another question that involves the Fire Department report. I think we had an expert here last week, a 25-year retiree of the Fire Department, and he attested that Tower 1, which would be the major safety vehicle to put a three-story building fire out, could not go in there and safely put its outriggers out. I'd like to have the Fire Department revisit this approval.
Before Ron answers that, I just want to make it very clear for the record, there was no expert here. A gentleman stood up from the audience, came to the microphone, and addressed the Board. He was not certified as an expert. He wasn't called to testify as an expert, so I want to make that very clear for the record.
Okay.
Now, Ron can answer your questions.
He was not an expert. He was a neighbor, stood up, and I believe...
Mr. Nichol, excuse me, one second. I just, again, would just ask the, the audience to just let us have this conversation. Everyone will have a chance to talk. Thank you.
I am, I am. Okay, in regards to your question, there is a report from the Milford Fire Department. After our meeting, I made a phone call to Assistant Chief Bernard Begley, who reviewed the plans. I spoke with him on the phone on 6/14/17. I brought up the galley question, and he stated his report stands as submitted. I'm going to review his checklist that he's, that he submitted with his review, which is part of your record, Site Plan Review Guidelines, date inspected 4/18/2017. He's got a heading Water Supply, Water Main Size. He's got a heading, water supply, water main size, passes, passes his review. Water flow passes his review. Hydrant spacing passes his review. Fire vehicle access, turning radius passes his review. Traffic flow to allow fire department access passes his review. Allotted to largest fire department vehicle passes his review. Fire lanes required passes his review. Landscaping grade for fire department access passes his review. He's got another heading, building access. Allocated access or setback for firefighting passes his review. Allocated access or setback for firefighting sprinkler passes his review. Landscape allows ground ladder operation passes his review.
I only have one comment to that.
And can I, can I just supplement those comments by stating again for the record that Marshall Begley is an expert? He's licensed by the state of Connecticut and he's employed by the city of Milford as a fire marshal. Specifically, one of his duties is to review all plans submitted to the planning and zoning board. You have his report. He is an expert.
With all due respect, Attorney Lynch, how can you stand there and say Tower One can make a turn there with this radius?
This site plan is similar to many developments throughout the city. The fire department has their protocol for bringing their vehicle in and out of sites like this. And this is, this has been reviewed by the fire marshal and he's satisfied with it.
Are there other questions from the board? Yes.
I've got a question from Mr. Sulkis. Mr. Wa, I know that he's testified before the board before. Did he testify in some respect at the last Seaside Avenue project or am I mixing that up with another one of the 830Gs?
That's irrelevant to this application, but yes, he was hired by the neighbors for the other Seaside application.
Right. And the other Seaside application, and he opined in his report that traffic did pose a safety issue. Is that right?
First of all, that's a separate application. This is a separate site, separate data with separate sightlines. So be, you know, again, he's an expert in traffic.
And Mr. Dolan, if I can jump in, you unfortunately weren't here at the last hearing. And one of the items that we made very specific for the record was our contention that this application was far different in terms of the narrowness of the road of Seaside Avenue at its westerly end, the curves at the westerly end, the location of the intersection of Amber Court directly across from that site, as well as the sightlines. So with all due respect, that was made a part of the public hearing at the last hearing and it was one of our major points that we made during our presentation.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? All right, thank you. Seeing no further questions, we will open this to public comment. I would ask, and that I know this is, and I had said it last time, I know this is very emotional for the neighbors. I would ask that first we just keep it as civil as possible. If you would direct all your comments to the board, not to the applicant or any of the applicant's engineers. And if we could as well, what I want to do is, we left this hearing open to speak to any new issues that were presented. The new issues that were presented was we did have a traffic study done, or reviewed, I should say reviewed. Correct, Mr. Sulkis, this was a review of the traffic study. We talked about some fencing that was being added and we also talked about some lighting redesign. So I would like to have public comment, but I would like to leave it and let it be addressing those items. So first, if there's anyone that is in favor of this project or the, the things that were being talked about, you could come forward now. If you would state your name and address and keep your comments to about three minutes and I, we'd be more than happy to hear everyone's comments. So anyone in favor? All right, seeing none, I would ask anyone opposed to this, and again, I would stress that we want to just address the items that were brought up tonight. So anyone that is opposed to and would like to comment on what was brought up? Good evening.
Good evening. Amanda Learned Taylor. I'm at 74 Underhill Road. I just have a little bit of concern about the moving trucks that was just brought up. As he, the attorney had mentioned, he lives on Maple Street. There was one single family that he lives next door that had a moving truck and it blocked the entire, it blocked the street and was a hindrance, in his words. Imagine this, a 12-unit apartment building where 12 people could be moving out every month and also be purchasing furniture every month. If the moving truck, water truck, any kind of delivery truck is to be on Seaside with their lights on, that's going to create a big hazard trying to get around it. If Seaside is a two-lane highway, as the traffic study said, and it's actually no parking. So it's going to cause a big public safety for us and our, in my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Stuart Pearl. I live at 4 Seaside and I have two points, I think, which are responsive to what you were asking for. In terms of the traffic, I don't think that the issue is just the number of trips. I think there's a problem getting out from a driveway onto Seaside Avenue that is very bad because people, just zoom down Seaside, as we learned last time, and you've got like probably nine people trying to turn left onto Seaside in the morning, which is going to be an enormous issue, I think. And I don't know that any of the traffic experts mentioned the fact that we have school buses going up and down this road and also a bus system that goes up and down the road. And I, I just think those things should be taken into account in terms of assessing viability of the project from that point of view. The last time I was here, less than we all were here, I pointed out that the applicant's lawyer, like a good and careful lawyer should, pointed out that he was just talking about under current law. And when I had the opportunity to address the board, I said, why are we in such a hurry? Current law may change very quickly. And so what's happened is I think that if the law hasn't changed already, it's going to pretty quickly. Senator Schlossberg's bill passed on June 7th through the Senate, 30 to 6, and it had already gone through the House, 116 to 33. My understanding, and I haven't read the bill, I've just read summaries of it, but my understanding is that it gives the board a great deal more latitude in terms of making decisions about 8-30G cases than it used to. So I, I think it's huge important to our community. My understanding is that the bill was sent to Governor Malloy on June 7th. And under the Connecticut statutes, which I have copies of if it would interest you, the governor has 15 days in which to deal with the bill. He can sign it, in which case it becomes law. He can veto it, in which case it can get overridden. Or if he doesn't sign it within 15 days after he gets it, it becomes the law. It's kind of different from the federal government where it's, I think it's called like a pocket veto or something. But here, it's the other way around. So I, you know, I spoke to the governor's office today and they confirmed that he hadn't signed it and he hadn't vetoed it. And so 15 days from June 7th is June 22nd, which is Thursday. So I just wanted to point out probably more to my neighbors and friends, but also to the board, that you, the amount of latitude that you have, I think your hands were to a certain extent tied prior to this. And I, I think that the ties have become unbound and that you can, you know, have much more latitude in making a decision that will work for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would say, and I, I understand the point, is, is that we have to deal with what we have in front of us right now. We can't, we can't deal with what might happen.
Hi, my name is Laura Smith. I live at 182 Seaside Avenue, which is right next door to this new development. And I'd just like to say, they make it sound so far away where these seven new cottages are going to go. It's five houses away from me. It's six houses away from 178 Seaside Avenue. It is not far. Meadow Side Road separates us. It's two houses away from Meadow Side. The same traffic study should apply and I do not remember any traffic study being done in April. So I think you should do a traffic study in the summer. You would not believe how many cars go down our road. I'd also like to say that this morning, when I was pulling out for work at 8:00 in the morning, a Milford City garbage truck broke down. So there was another truck there to tow it away. It was such a hazard, you would not believe. I had to back out and actually go the opposite way and go all the way around Lewis Street and up, I work at Milford Hospital, I had to go all the way up and around just to get to work because there was a big truck in the road. And they're correct. If you, if you get a furniture delivery, they park in the road. And I'd just like to say that the mayor put in these beautiful sidewalks up Seaside Avenue and there are so many people walking. Every time I go to pull in my driveway, it's almost like a joke now because we have to wait for the people to go by. I mean, this would be such a hazard, not to mention all the kids on bikes that ride up and down Seaside Avenue. And the bike, I don't even know if you could call it a bike path. I mean, across from me, it's about this wide. And yeah, at certain turns, it's about this wide. You have to wait and let traffic pass just to let the kids go by on their bikes. So I, I'm very opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I would just ask everyone to, if we can address the items that have already been addressed. Thank you.
My name's Parks. I live on Underhill Road. Is it okay if I talk about the bill that the gentleman was talking about before? I just have a quick thing to say about it.
I'm sorry, what, sir?
The gentleman was talking about the bill that was going through to the governor. I just want, I had a brief thing to say about it, if that's okay.
If we could stick to what is, what was brought up as far as the, the things, please.
I'll word into what I have to say. Basically, in the video with the mayor and Kim Rose, it was deemed like what's healthy for Milford was in the bill. And as far as healthy, we're talking about like fire trucks coming and going. We see a lot of UPS trucks in the area, delivering Amazon. Everybody likes their little stuff from Amazon. Stuff's delivered all the time. What's happened, there's a moving truck, UPS truck, and when you call 911, it's not just one truck that comes out. Three or four trucks come. So now you've got a logjam there. Also concerns me with the water as well. That could be, that could be an issue as far as like healthy for the neighborhood. So that's all I really have to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Steve Varga. I live on 109 Underhill Road. The one question, the architect brought up about the fence on the western side, what was the height on it? I didn't see that in the blueprint. Number two, where's the fire hydrant that's on Seaside Avenue? On the blueprint I saw, it was in two different locations. Also, he didn't answer where the water's going to go when the galleys fill up. Is it going to go onto Seaside Avenue? Is it going to go into the neighbor's yard? I didn't, I didn't see anything in there saying when the galleys fill up, where the water's going to go. I have a flooding problem on Underhill Road. It does drain eventually, but where's the water going to go if the galleys do fill up?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Jack Hyatt, 49 Basset Street. We're discussing the truck, trucks in and out of this, this parking lot and stuff. They said small garbage truck. That's fine. Till they get mad at the company and they fire him and they hire somebody else and he comes in with a big garbage truck. What's going to happen then? And I am not an ex, not, well, not anymore, I'm not an expert. At one time I was on, on fire apparatus and stuff. And I'd like to just give each one of you a copy of these photos and stuff that I got.
If you could hand them to the secretary and, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to new items that were brought up tonight?
Hi, Barbara Mauro, 83 Underhill Road. I am no expert. I'm not disputing anybody who's an expert. I'm not going to comment on all their particulars. But one thing Attorney Lynch did say, and I don't mean any disrespect to anyone, he mentioned that he lives in a single-family neighborhood. I wonder what would happen if somebody sold their three-quarters of an acre and they were going to put it in their backyard? That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Hi, Kathy Benetti, 157 Seaside Ave. I had a much longer speech, but due to the other things, I've crossed some things out. Let me suffice it by saying, when the last project was proposed at 214 Seaside, I requested and paid for a copy of that traffic study too. So I took some time to compare the two studies side by side over the weekend. The data that was reported in the older traffic study for 214 Seaside used numbers recorded in August 2015. In Mr. Spears' report, he stated that the number was consistent with state data. The data that was reported in the current traffic study for 178 Seaside used the same numbers that were recorded in August of 2015. But this time in Mr. Spears' report, he stated that the numbers were not consistent with the state data and therefore he altered the numbers to match the state information. I urge you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Pat Francis, 151 Seaside. This board has faced many issues with Seaside Avenue many times. Back in the 80s, when I first moved in, the house across the street from me wanted to be, it was a two-family prior to World War II. They wanted to return. Nope, not acceptable. This is a single-family zoning. Down the street, Lewis and Meadow Side? I'm sorry, Meadow Side and Seaside? The woman wanted to put a driveway in facing Seaside. Nope, can't do it. Traffic. Now, all of a sudden, somebody's coming in and they want, not only do we have eight down the street, now you want to put another dozen. This traffic on this street is unbearable. And again, taking a left out of that driveway to go back downtown, go to the train station, go to the highways, they're never going to be able to get out. It would have to be a right-hand turn only. You'll never get down that street. And I didn't see any of you pull into my driveway and I offered last board, in the meeting, come sit in our driveway and try to take a turn. Try to get out of our driveways. It is impossible. And now you're going to add that many more cars, traffic, people. And I don't know how they get a study of nine trips in the morning if you have 12 families there. That's one, two cars each. That's at least 12 if they're working. They have to have an income to be low-income. So you could have potentially up to 42 cars leaving in the morning. Not nine, 42. I think, I think they really need to address this traffic a little deeper than what they're saying they did. a little deeper than what they're saying they did. And also, in the summer, it's much different than April. You have all the summer rentals in, and it's fun time on Seaside. So, come on down, park in my driveway. Anytime, any of you, I've offered this before. Come down and enjoy the scenery. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shali Leslie. I live at 234 Seaside Avenue. I was part of the other group for the other Seaside project that hasn't started yet. I'd just like to make a comment that we seem to be reviewing the traffic studies of the developer in both cases over and over again. Our group was promised, you all voted, on an actual study paid for by the city. We didn't get that. We got another review of the same numbers provided by the developer. I just think it's time, with all that's going in on Seaside, two projects now, you've heard from how many neighbors, how many people on Seaside about the traffic, the trucks, the windiness, on and on, and we still have no traffic study. I spoke to the mayor at the Historical Society's 8-30G presentation past fall, and he said there was money to do these studies. He had approved it. There was money set aside, yet no traffic study of Seaside Ave from the city of Milford. I don't know, when, when is, there gonna be too much traffic ever? I don't, I don't see the end. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emma Sikati, and I live at 156 Seaside Avenue. And if you can bear one more person talking about traffic, I need to. I'm 65. I've lived at that address almost my entire life. I'm not an expert. I've not actually done a study on paper, but I live at 24-7. The hospital is right up the street. There are numerous times that there's fire trucks. There are ambulances, and on and on. There is everyday traffic. I agree, you're gonna put more traffic in. The people coming down that street, I know it's 25 miles an hour, they don't do 25 miles an hour. I get in and out very carefully. I have hedges I have to look through, and I can't even tell you how many times I've almost been killed coming out of my driveway. I oppose more traffic coming in and out of Seaside with trucks and cars in and out. Will it take a fatality before something happens? Thank you. I oppose this.
Thank you. Good evening.
I've never come to a meeting before, so excuse me for being a little bit nervous. I question-
If you could just state your name and address, please, for record.
Oh, Spencer Rogers, 123 Underhill Road. Not an expert in water. I don't know anything about water. But when people say, "I believe," and it's my understanding, it doesn't sound scientific. When it rains really hard, there is a big sinkhole on Underhill Road that fills up in, with about a foot of water. Now, if you don't live there, you don't know about it. But when it rains, it really fills up. I question where that water's going. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We should pay attention.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Sikati, 156 Seaside Avenue. I agree with the board that you have to go back and check with the fire study, commissioner's study. And the reason why I say that is because I was looking at the print, and the PSI for the weight on those drainage covers is 4,000 pounds. The ex-fireman who was at the last meeting, right, who is now retired, who's not a professional, right, he stated that Tower One weighs 80,000 pounds. If I'm not mistaken, that's 40 ton. And with the outriggers stretched out, I think there's a weight problem as far as how much weight those covers on those galleys can hold. They say the galleys are, what was it, 30-something feet? Is it feet deep? I, maybe I misunderstood or didn't look at the print right, but they're, they're fairly deep from what I'm understanding. When those fill up, they also show that the drains off the buildings are going down into those galleys. So, between the roof water and the regular water hitting the ground, where's all this water going to, into the neighbor's cellar? I oppose the project. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Lynch, you have an opportunity to respond to any of the comments that were made.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna conclude basically the same way I concluded two weeks ago. I'm gonna remind you that there's a law that was passed back in 1990. It was a law that was passed to encourage towns that have less than 10% of their housing stock dedicated to affordable housing. The statute sets up parameters by which you have to review these applications, and the statute is very clear that this board has to and is bound to approve applications such as this unless there's an overriding health and safety issue that's been raised. The neighbors have talked about traffic. We've had three reviews of these plans by traffic experts. The city's own expert, the head of the traffic division, our traffic engineer, and you had a third-party review of our traffic engineer's report. We can't control in terms of other drivers or people pulling out of their driveways. The people coming out of this site will be coming out and turning left or right head-on. They won't be backing out onto the street, and that's a big difference between other residents in that area when they're backing out of their single-family driveway. Secondly, there's, I'm not gonna go into any discussion about the pending bill. It's been passed by the legislature, whether it's signed by the governor or not. It has an effective date of October 1st of 2017. It has no bearing whatsoever on this application. I'm just reminding you of that. And then lastly, I would say again that my clients have been builders here in town for 35 years. Their other projects speak for themselves. The project that was approved up the street on Seaside Avenue remains unbuilt. That's not what would happen if this is approved. My clients, you've seen the work that they've done on their other sites. They're longstanding builders here in Milford, and they're committed to providing affordable housing through this application to tenants that would be moving into this project. So, based upon the statutory parameters, I'm asking you, as I did two weeks ago, to do the right thing, to follow, you know, what the law says, not ignore the law, and approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. As part of the public hearing, anyone who has spoken tonight before has a chance to comment on what Attorney Lynch said. So, it would have to be limited to that. Good evening.
Hi, Amanda Lerna Taylor, Underhill Road. We do have a clause that says under, that the application can be denied due to a safety issue. And I think that's, that is what we are saying. It's gonna be a safety issue with moving trucks, with 12 cars going in and out, even though his traffic study was in April, not August, and just the fire trucks. So, I believe that we do have a clause to legally deny this, and it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? If you could limit your comments to the attorney's remarks, please.
Yes, I was. The attorney pointed out that the bill is going to be effective October what?
It's-
October what?
My, my understanding from the, from Attorney Lynch is that it's October 1st of 2017.
Okay. So, I, I think that it would be naive and politically bad for the board to just pretend that it doesn't exist. Thank you.
It's nice that Attorney Lynch here has strong-armed us. Pat Francis, 151 Seaside. You'll get to know me, trust me. It, it's, it's nice that we're being strong-armed. I grew up in a little town called Easton, down the road. Six guys run the zoning board and nothing goes through. They don't care. That's why that town still looks like a town that's worth living in. We are getting bombarded with all these development projects. We're closing schools down. Now, are we gonna have to build schools to accommodate? These are one-bedroom with a den. If these are only one-bedroom apartments, that means it's just a single or young couple. Supposing they get lucky and they get pregnant. What are we gonna do? We're gonna start opening up schools again? We're gonna start? It's nice that we're being strong-armed. Yes, I understand. The law today is. We could stretch this out and let's see what October brings us. I'd like to see this tabled, if not closed completely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Varga, Underhill Road. Again, how tall is the fence on the west side of our property? Where's the water gonna go in the galleys when it fills up? And where are the fire hydrants that are on Seaside Avenue? Again, the prints show two different locations. And is that where the fire department wants them?
Thank you.
Barbara Mauro, 83 Underhill. I'm getting educated over the last couple of weeks, so thank you. I know the law was written in for affordable housing under all these different statutes and probably rigorous tests that they're doing in 1990. And they say you can't fight City Hall. Laws can be changed. Just because it's a law, it doesn't mean it's right. And it, and I feel that it's not right for that area. There's other areas that are bigger, that could accommodate not one bedroom. What about a house that can accommodate affordable housing for a family? I know, and I might be wrong on this, but it was supposed to be $900 or $1,100 a month rent for the affordable housing. That's affordable? And it was gonna give more business to the downtown? I'm, and, and I'm not complaining. I'm very happy where I am. But I'm watching every cent I can give to the downtown going out to dinner and everything like that. So, how affordable housing is going to be good for one bedroom in a single-family neighborhood with a conglomerate of 12 units? There are other areas that could accommodate that better. It's not going to look pleasing. It's gonna be pleasing to profit and things like that, and it will depreciate our land value a little bit. But there's just so many other areas. I just don't understand why you have to shove down our throats 12 units. And I know it was said it could have been 15, which, oh my God. But when's enough gonna be enough? I mean, Milford is, it's like one dead strip mall after another. And then you come into these little neighborhoods that are so nice. And I know, you know, there's probably snickering behind me because I don't know all of the legal things going on. But I, I'm opposed to it, and I just hope you think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the attorney's comments?
Yeah, Jack Hyatt, 49 Bassett Street. Attorney said something about, about the 830G here. A month ago or so, there was a top-notch builder before this board looking to put up some pretty expensive places here in town. And I distinctly remember him saying, "830G brings property value down and would require substandard quality." That was his words. One-bedroom, one- and two-bedroom apartments or condos, whatever they're gonna be, are for professional people. Are there that many low-income professional people that, that need these things? Families, families are gonna need three bedrooms. Three bedrooms are for, for kids. This, that's, that's your low income. 830Gs, inexpensive building, lowers quality and backfires on communities. And that was from a very, very, very good builder.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has already spoken before that would like to address the attorney's comments? Okay. Seeing none, Attorney Lynch, you have one last shot here?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. And I would entertain if the board would like to act on this. Mr. Dolan?
I've got a question for Mr. Sulcus. I'd just like some clarification on the ordinance that was passed by the alderman with respect to our ability to order a traffic study. Is that, is our ability limited to a peer review of the traffic study done by the applicant's expert, or do we have the ability to order our own new traffic study? Because I'm not exactly sure.
The ordinance says that we can just hire experts if needed. It doesn't say for a traffic study, it could be for any experts that we need. So, for instance, we had an application where we had a sound engineer evaluate a proposal that people were worried was going to be allowed. But the, the standard, I will tell you that the standard, the reason why we order the review is that the data that's being used is common data. So, if there's, if there's a problem with the interpretation of the data, that, we're hoping that's what, you know, our expert would find. But if everybody is going to the same well for the data, which they are, it seems, it, not, not necessarily, we're not gonna gain anything by having someone go out and conduct more, you know, independent or different data than what we know is already there.
The applicant's traffic study was done in April. Is that, and that's what Mr. Hua was reviewing? Is that right? Wouldn't it, couldn't it be different if it was done in the summertime, given that a lot of people are gonna be driving down that area more during the summer than in April?
I will defer to the traffic engineers, but my understanding is that they're using standardized data from, again, from a particular time and a particular place. So, I'll, I'll defer to their expertise.
Mr. Chairman, I know the public hearing's closed, but just a point of order to respond to Michael's comment.
Yes, Chairman.
The traffic study, the counts were taken in August.
All right, thank you.
Not April. They were taken in August.
Are there other, again, is there other questions, or does the, what, what would the board like to do?
I have a-
Mr. Grant?
Couple of suggestions based on some of the comments by the residents. I'd like to see that Unit D3, the very last building, I'd like to see that brought down to two units instead of three, which will increase the, the lawn area, which also would address questions about the water runoff because the retentions would now actually be a little oversized compared to the amount of impervious ground that's there. It would also help, one of the last residents was asking about the dumpster being so close to the back, which by eliminating that one unit, it would also push the dumpster further away from the rear yard. And then the other comments I have is basically, there are a number of trees being removed and some being put back. I'd like to see a little bit more up toward, on the north and south sides in the front, where the existing buildings are, or residents are on each side, to stick a couple more trees in there to basically help some visual block from the apartments into those houses. So, those are a few things that I have seen based on the comments from the residents. And I'd also like to state, I, as I've stated before, you know, I- And I'd also like to state, I am, as I've stated before, you know, I am for the 830G, for affordable housing, but to stick them in the middle of our residential areas and our regulations, basically, one of the things that are in there is that we want to preserve our single-family residents rather than have them beat up with these 830Gs and them stuck in every place. But I think that those suggestions, by adding a few trees, eliminating that one unit, increasing the amount of pervious area, and moving the dumpster would help as far as this project goes.
Mr. Lutz.
I was going to ask, when does this, when do we have to act on this? What is the date?
The public hearing has to close by July 25th.
Okay, so we have some time. There's a lot of information that's been passed in these two sessions. I also would like to see some changes made. I think that, I think most people in Milford are not against people having affordable housing, people to start, people to retire, so forth and so on. So I think that in some ways, these complexes are very good. In other ways, trying to get them to fit into a neighborhood in such a way that they don't impinge upon the neighborhood is the trick. In other words, you don't want to have, you know, developer 100 and the neighborhood 0, or you want to have it 50/50. You want to have a situation where you have something that fits in, fits in well, creates some affordable housing. So just as my colleague said, for instance, in this front area next to 170, I would like to see the fence moved to the inside of that grass area rather than the outside, and a lot of greenery put in there, so that when that person looks out their window at such a close area, they're going to see greenery instead of seeing a fence, okay? Perhaps in some of the fence lines as we're going down there, if there's enough room, you know, I understand that we need a certain amount of room, I'd love to see greenery, you know, going down there rather than a fence. Maybe a five- or eight-foot buffer, whatever we can get in, okay, with different kinds of greenery in there, to try to get this to more blend in, you know, with the neighborhood rather than a fixed fence. So my sense, my sense is, is that maybe, you know, working together here, we can craft, we can craft something, okay, that's more acceptable to the neighborhood, all right? And also, like I said, not one side wins and one side loses, but everybody, you know, kind of gets something. I can, you know, as the board knows, we have turned down how many projects and had them reversed in court, okay? So rather than going that route, okay, as the neighbors would want us to do, and, you know, and try another one in court and lose, and then if that's the case, then you're going to get exactly what you have here. I think that in other sense, another thing that we can do is work with the developer, okay, to come up with something that everybody likes, all right? So that's my comments on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz.[1368.83][1368.83](APPLAUSE). Are there other comments? Mr. Verone?
If I understand the 830 law correctly, I've spent a considerable amount of time in it. One of the provisions is that there is someone who is, will maintain the position of that 830G property for 40 years. What have you put in place to accommodate that part of the law? How will we know in 10 years from now, in all due respect to the builder, when you pass, who's going to be in charge of that for the next 40 years to make sure that that property remains an 830G property?
Mr. Verone?
Sir?
The public hearing is closed. You can't examine the applicant.
Oh, I apologize.
But I can answer your question.
Thank you.
To answer your question, the property has to be deed restricted, so it goes on to the land records, and they have to file an annual report with the office.
Are there other comments from the board? Yes.
Yeah, along the same lines that I was addressing before, and I really didn't get any satisfactory answers. I would like to either have our fire department or an outside consultant come in in regard to the radius of Tower One in this particular application. And I would also like to see, or have another engineering group come in and tell me where the water is going to go.[1470.83][1470.83](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Solkus.
Mr. Chair, the record, the public hearing has closed. We can't be adding any new information into the record, although I will tell you that both the applicant and I, when I look at the fire department report, the fire department and the deputy chief, who is also the fire marshal, has stated this meets their fire criteria. And there were two items that the applicant talked about. One was for, there was a separate one for Tower One, and there was one for general access. So again, all I can say is that the fire department approved the plan, bringing in an outside consultant to tell us, to look for flaws from our own experts, which are our fire department. Well, we have no time to do that because, again, the public hearing has closed.
All right, thank you. Are there other comments, questions, not questions, but comments from the board? All right, seeing none, there's been, you know, a couple ideas thrown out from Mr. Grant and Mr. Lutz. I would propose that the board reflect, well, reflect, think about those, think about those possible changes, and we can address this at the next meeting. Either Mr. Lutz or Mr. Grant, if you would like to, at that time, you know, finalize maybe a motion that we could put forward.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Is there any opportunity for, between now and the next meeting, I agree with tabling it, okay, with the, perhaps the city planner and maybe some board members, to sit down with the applicant to see if we can craft some changes here that might be more acceptable to everyone?
I would defer to Mr. Solkus, but I don't believe we can do that.
That would be correct.
I think as a board, we don't have that opportunity to meet privately with a developer to think about changes. So what I would ask is, again, for the board to think about the possible changes that were talked about tonight, and at the next meeting, that we could address those changes.
Mr. Chair, if you would like, based on the comments that were made this evening, I can craft a motion that you can use as the basis to do something with at your next meeting.
That's fine, thank you. Thank you. On to our next item is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Yeah, I attended the inland wetland meeting, and several things were approved. Several building projects that were approved that were-
Mr. Nichols? Could you just wait one second for everyone to leave? She couldn't hear what you were saying. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Well, the public part is closed. The public hearing part of it is closed. We're just leaving it. Next time. Yes, Mr. Nichols? Sorry?
Yeah, like I was saying, I attended the, several of the inland wetland meetings, and several motions to build were approved with specific conditions, and that is, they were building within 100 feet of the inland wetland water line.
Are there other liaison reports? Seeing none, Regulations Subcommittee?
None at this time, but we will have some for the next meeting.
Okay, item I is approval of the minutes for 516, 2017, and 66, 2017. Like a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. It was on earlier, Mr. Solkus, staff report?
I've none this evening.
Okay. I have no, I have no chair report. I'd like a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Okay.[1782.73][1782.73](END OF TRANSCRIPT)